We'll call this meeting to order. Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. Tonight, we have for our invocation, we have Brother Les Chapman, the preaching minister of Hendersonville Church of Christ at 107 Rockland Road in Hendersonville. He's originally from Ripley, Mississippi, and served as the youth minister for the Covington Church of Christ in Covington, Tennessee, from 1982 to 1990, and is the minister of the Northside Church of Christ in Nashville from 1990 to 2018. He and his wife June have two sons and two grandsons. Les and June enjoy mountains and the beach, as well as visiting historical cities such as Washington, D.C., and Chicago. Brother Chapman, we're honored to have you here tonight. If you would lead our invocation.
Would you bow with me, please? Father, we pause as the evening sun sets, to thank you for life, to thank you for allowing us to live in this community, to enjoy the freedoms of this great nation. And, Father, as we pause tonight, we want to ask your blessings upon our country. We pray for our president, we pray for our vice president, we pray for our senators, our representatives, for those who sit in judgment, Father, and especially as we choose a new member of the Supreme Court, we pray that there will be wisdom in that choice. Father, we pray for our state, the great state of Tennessee. We thank you for the privilege of living in this state, and we pray for our governor, we pray for all of the members of our legislature, for those who sit on our state courts, Father, for those who serve in our law enforcement, and all of our special care, and our firefighters, and, Father, for each one that serves our public, we thank you. And we thank you, Father, for Sumner County. We thank you for the way you've blessed us with such a beautiful place to live, and, Father, for those who love this community and this county, we thank you for each elected official that's here tonight. And, Father, we pray that you'll grant them wisdom to make decisions that will help us, Father, as we seek to live in safety, as we seek to live in prosperity, as we seek, Father, to experience that joy of freedom and happiness that, Father, living in this great country offers us. And so, tonight, I pray you'll be with each of these elected officials. We pray for the election process that's ongoing right now, for those who have sacrificed to step up, Father, to say that they'll serve our community. And we pray that you'll guide those who will be choosing our next elected officials, that, Father, each one that is chosen will serve our community well. And so, Father, we just thank you. We thank you most of all for blessing us with life. May we live it in a way that honors you. And we ask all of this in our Lord's name. Amen.
Amen.
Do you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's check our roll.
Roll calls now open. Each commissioner, please record your presence.
We have 23. Leslie Shell's the only one out.
Okay, we have 23 presenters.
Okay, we have 23 present. Michelle is in Washington, D.C. at a leadership function with her son, so she's supposed to be watching a stream online, so we're hoping Leslie is getting Washington, D.C. organized and in good working order. Your consent agenda, your regular and consent agenda are before you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Akins. Is there a second? Second by Baker Ring. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your minutes are in your packet. I'll wait for a motion to approve the minutes. So moved by Commissioner Mo Taylor, second by Commissioner Sullivan. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Do we have anyone? Yes. Okay, please show that Mr. Pomeroy abstained from the vote on the minutes. Do we have anyone, Mr. Weatherford, that signed up for public comments?
Anyone wish to sign up that has not already?
Thank you, sir. All right, your veteran service report is on your table. We have two presentations tonight. Mr.
Here it comes. There, is that it? There we go. All right, great. Just before we get started on the certificate itself, just wanted to sort of explain a little bit about how the travel and the club soccer is organized in the state. There's Division One, Two, and Three, with the Division One being the highest level of competition. And the girls' team that's up here we're about to recognize is the first girl's soccer team ever from the base in Sumner County to ever win the state championship. So, they did a tremendous job there, so I'll go ahead and get through with the resolution here. Whereas, the Tennessee United Soccer Club 2004 Girls Red Team had a banner season and captured the 2018 Tennessee State League Division One State Cup Championship title. And whereas, the girls' team played all over the southeast in the fall, U.S. Youth Soccer Southern Regional Premier League, and captured the state title tournament championship by winning three straight elimination games, outscoring their opponents 14 goals to one. They placed first place in nearly every competition they participated in, including Tennessee United's own tournament champions, the East Tennessee Spring Classic, they went down to Disney World, the President's Day Tournament down there, and the Tennessee State League's regular season competition as well. Whereas, under the leadership of head coach Zach Trobal, the team players Lexi Berry, Mackenzie Campbell, Hannah Clark, Kylie Crawford, Brylee Hitt, Riley Lombardi, Eva McBee, Ally Rice, Jessica Roberts, Liza Cersei, Reagan Smiley, Molly Smith, Hannah Smoot, Emma Webster, and Carly Zettergren worked hard and were dedicated to the winning objectives, therefore giving the team their victorious season. So, now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting this regular session on the 16th day of July 2018, that this body does hereby congratulate and commend the Tennessee United Soccer Club 2004 Girls Red Team and their coach Zach Trobal for their achievements, and wishes them success in the future. And I so move.
Motion made by Mr. Becker, seconded by Mr. Vaughn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Zach, we're expecting a good speech.
Thank you. First off, thank you to the Sumner County Commission for having us tonight, recognizing the accomplishments of these girls. They've worked extremely hard, and this type of recognition just validates all of that hard work. Thank you to the parents of this team. You guys sacrificed so much for these girls to be able to do what they do. Thank you. And to you girls, I feel very honored to be your coach. It's been a great year. Can't wait to be back here with you again next year. Yeah, congratulations.
Did you tell the girls that they each have to give a short speech, three to five minutes? And please let the minutes show that it was Mr. Posposil that seconded.
Thank you, gosh.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, and we're going to recognize now Mr. Ring, who's going to honor the Sumner County Rugby Football Club. If the team and the coaches want to come forward, please.
This is a resolution honoring the Sumner Rugby Football Club High School Team. Whereas, the Sumner County Rugby Football Club High School Team, called the All Blacks, named after the historic New Zealand rugby team, defeated Rutherford Rugby 40 to 21, and won the Tennessee Rugby Association's state championship on May 19, 2018, at the MTSU Sports Complex. And whereas, the All Blacks, under the leadership of Brian Silkwood, Charlie Geary, Blake Holder, and Tom Brennan, practiced hard, worked diligently, and remained focused, which resulted in their tremendously successful season. And whereas, team players Alex Dillard, Ethan Blue, Axel Wicks, Will Ring, Josh Shelter, Grant Silkwood, Keegan Ballinger, Cole Kimler, Archie Turner, Will Thurston, Liam Taylor, Walker Helms, Anthony Allen, Griffin McCauley, Tyler Dang, Nate Ireland, and Devon Carlisle displayed great team spirit, played with pride, and brought honor to their school and our county. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting on the regular session on the 16th day of July 2018, that this body does hereby congratulate and commend the Sumner Rugby Football Club All Blacks for their great accomplishments, and wishes them future success. And be it resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to further furnish a copy of this resolution to the Sumner County Rugby Football Club High School Team and the coaching staff. So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Becker. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. And Coach Brian Silkwood's going to want to say something.
First of all, I want to say thanks again for having us up. One player that's up here wasn't mentioned. He actually was not able to play in the championship game due to an injury he had in practice. Tatum broke his jaw in practice, and really was not much of a contact sport at the time, but was there supporting, so we apologize. He was not actually on the roster for the game, but was definitely there. One of the biggest things I like to say about rugby when I talk about the kids and the players that have played before is that I think the biggest thing for me is the amount of kids that I had that come in front of me that have never touched the ball, but eventually end up playing further down the road. I've got two kids here tonight, Cole and Will Ring, both will be going to University of Tennessee to continue their rugby careers there. They both got scholarships to play rugby at the University of Tennessee, so kudos to them. One of my players just flew back yesterday from being in Mexico for a week, playing on a U.S. national select side, where he was one of 22 players to represent the United States. Played against Mexico, Cayman Islands, and Jamaica. They went two-for-one. He started most of the games, played, and that's Alex. So, thanks again. This was our back-to-back state championships, two years in a row, and we're looking to do it again, here again, once again, one more year.
And congratulations. That's so exciting, and a great sport to continue playing for the rest of your life, too. All right, your consent agenda items are before you. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda? Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Akins. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your veteran service report is actually not on your table. We'll locate that and get that emailed out, so you'll have a copy of it. So, it was overlooked this month, but we'll get that to you. Your written reports should be on your desk. Need a motion for our notaries. Motion made by Commissioner Pomeroy, seconded by Commissioner Ring. Let's vote.
Notary applications are on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 23 votes entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? It is unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kemp. We'll now go to Commissioner Lamar for committee on committees.
Well, the first thing tonight is the Airport Authority, and that's deferred until September. The second item is the Library Board and the replacement of Larry Hinton for a three-year term, and the county executive recommends Sean Utley, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Lamar, seconded by Commissioner Goode. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, although I will add that there's probably no replacing Mr. Hinton.
Absolutely not.
He'll do more than adequately, I promise.
And he sends his greetings to those of us on the commission that he knew, so he's excited about getting to serve again.
Good.
The next one is the Board of Construction Appeals, and this is replacing Millard Bridges for the remainder of his term, which expires in December, I mean, in November of 2008. And the county executive recommends Rick Halcom, and I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Lamar, seconded by Commissioner Pomeroy. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And next month, we have the Civil Service Board, Regional Planning Commission, and the Sumner County Joint Economic and Community Development Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lamar. All right, education. Highway. Okay, general ops, no report. Emergency services. Legislative. Financial management. Financial management is good.
I know, I know.
Budget committee.
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Becker.
I wouldn't put it like that.
Well, I thought we were on a roll there. Go ahead, Mr. Becker.
Now, the Financial Management Committee, we met at our regular scheduled meeting earlier tonight. Just wanted to let everybody know, the committee is, we'll be looking at our county's purchasing policy to see what updates need to be made. And we're also beginning discussions about potentially maybe centralizing the purchasing for the county instead of each department handling their own. So, get that more centralized, so we can get it more controlled. So, just wanted to give that update.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Budget, Mr. Pomeroy.
We'll just take a motion to group and approve? No, just kidding. We do have a report. We did meet at our regular scheduled time. Just kidding. Give me a little leeway. All right. We did meet at our regular scheduled time. First item on the agenda is 1807-01. That's setting the, second vote on setting the tax levy in Sumner County for the fiscal year of July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. That will stay at the $2.50 rate, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Pomeroy, seconded by Commissioner Goode. I see no discussion. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 22 votes are entered. Anyone not voting wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? With 21 affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
Mr. Pomeroy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 1807-02, appropriating up to $4 million for capital project needs for FY 2019 from local capital projects restricted fund balance. This is a list of general ops and the county executive worked together to put a list together of our most pressing needs. For instance, the roof on this building, you'll see that in your packet. We have approved that through local capital. The county executive will go down the list in priority and try to knock out some general maintenance on buildings and county projects that we need. So, I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Pomeroy, seconded by Commissioner Echols. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? With 22 affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
Okay, Mr. Pomeroy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 1807-03, appropriating 202,500. That's 199,500 plus 3,000 for closing from capital projects restricted fund balance for the Gallatin First Baptist Church Southwater Parking Lot. Just a little update on this. This is a, we'd like to thank the church. We've worked on this for, I don't know, two years and have worked back and forth. Miss Judy Harden, our road to pretend it will help us. The city of Gallatin paid for the engineering, so this is the gravel parking lot that is right across the street from our court right now. It's been, it was used for a long time. It got so decayed and never really was paved that the church thought it was best to, hey, we got to shut this thing down till we come to a resolution. Through working with them closely, we've now decided to actually turn that into, we're going to pick up, I believe, 72 parking spots. Is that correct? Close enough? I think it's 72. You have it in your packet. So, glad that we finally got that done. That should help with court days down around the square. So, I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Pomeroy, seconded by Commissioner Goode. Sorry, Ms. Kruger. I was leaning to the right. But I see no discussion. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving 17 affirmative votes, resolution is approved on second reading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pomeroy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 1807-04, appropriating 5.7 million for design and consultant phase from local capital project fund for the new Sumner County Courthouse project. I think there's been a lot of discussion about this. I think the best way to go about it is just to, I'll make a motion, get a second. I'm sure we'll have some questions, and I'll gladly answer them. I will say that, to be clear, we are approving up to $5.7 million. After the end of this phase, what we would have would be, you would have your consultant that we've already hired and paid, but after this 5.7, we would know whether we're going to use Site A or Site B. The negotiations with the church would be finished and complete. After that, it would be a full design of the project, all three different buildings, architecturally designed, ready to go. We would have a set of plans. So, at that point, the commission could do whatever they wanted, whether they decide to move forward, if they decide to wait two years before they move forward. It is at least saying that if we ever do anything to this building, this is how we would do it, and we've already got the paying architectural fee paid for. So, there is a cutoff point there. So, I'll make a motion, and then we can discuss.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Pomeroy, seconded by Commissioner Ring. Mr. Hinton.
I beg your tolerance a little bit, because I've asked these questions to some of my peers, and some of us thought we knew the answer, and some of us didn't know anything at all, and some of us know a little. So, I've got several questions that I'd like to ask where it'll become a matter of record. The first question I have is, who is in charge? When you hire somebody, whether they be a project manager or a design engineer or whatever, somebody, somebody from Sumner County has got to be in charge. And I'd like for us to determine who that's going to, if it's the county executive, then we ought to say that. If it's not the county, if it's a committee, then we ought to say that. So, I'd like that question answered. You want me to spell them all off?
Why don't we go one at a time? I think it'll be better if we go one at a time, Mr. Hinton.
I have a short memory, Mr. Hinton. So, yes, we've already approved to hire a project consultant, project manager, construction manager for this job. Now, the way that construction manager works is, for this phase, he would be in charge. He would be our liaison, just like Mr. Hinton, when we did the ad hoc committee that you chaired and I vice chaired. We were looking at better ways to control construction projects. So, the construction manager will work for us. His job and his pay will be to manage this job. So, in this phase, he will take a draw of the salary we've approved up to him, and he would be in charge of going to the architects and getting the design phase and all of that done. He would report directly to the committee at that point. So, he would bring back the bids for those things, and then we would approve going on. Does that, and he would also, from that point, then he's paid. If we stop there, he does not continue to get paid.
Okay, when you said report to the committee, are you talking about General Ops Committee?
I believe it would go to General Ops at that time.
Okay, who signs the contracts? Who's going to put their John Henry on the piece of paper that starts this money out flowing from Sumner County?
I think, as most situations, Mr. Hinton, that would just be the, that would be the executive branch, you know, so that would be your county executive. After we approve it, that would have to sign on to move, just like, be very similar to what we do when we've done large building camp. Just like we finish with the school projects, Dr. Phillips comes in and gives a report on where they're at. Difference being is we've actually hired instead of a construction manager that would be at all of those meetings to give those reports to us.
Okay. Michelle just weighed in via text and said she's watching online, and she wanted me to say that, you know, everything that involves money and everything would have to come back through General Ops and then through the budget committee, so.
Tell her thank you.
Michelle, Mr. Hinton said thank you.
Who approves changes? If we run If we run into this now, if, 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 when this project manager starts on this job and runs into things, and invariably, that'll happen, there'll be things that'll, there'll be things that'll come up.
Changes in the construction industry. Mr. Hinton, that's why we're hiring a construction manager. Obviously, we've debated and talked about the fact that we don't have a county engineer or a person over county buildings. So we would be, we would be trusting that, that project manager and that construction manager who's working for us to, to handle those. I'm assuming, and yet again, I won't be here for that process, there's still a little work to be done once you get to the actual, before you bust it ground, you would have to, yet again, come back, vote, see if you wanted to do the building, what, Part A, Part B, Part C. But that person would be your construction manager. I don't know if there'll be a limitation, I know that's been talked about. If there was a change that was gonna be over a certain dollar amount, it had to come back to committee to see that. But yes, when you hire a construction manager, just like when we talked in that, in that meeting, when we did it, he's who we're trusting to manage the project.
Yeah, and I, and I think if there were, there would be some limits on the change orders the construction manager could approve, like dollar amount limits, and if they go above those, then it would have to come back through General Ops and the full commission.
And hopefully, some of them will be cost savings.
That's correct. That's correct, and that is the way he, that is, that would be the way he's structured.
Yeah, and, and I would hope that, that those of any significance would come back through General Ops or at least through the county executive.
That's my understanding, Mr. Hinton.
And the project manager works for our county executive, or does, everybody's gotta have a line of accountability. Does he work for the county executive, or does he work for the?
Well, he works for Sumner County. He would be just like any consultant that we have, but yes, his day-to-day, since we all, I think, most of us, with the exception of Mr. Decker, maybe we all have day jobs, and, and he won't be here either. But yes, on the day-to-day executive, the executive branch would take care of that, which would be your county executive.
All, all reporting would be back to the General Ops and through the committee process to the full commission.
Okay. Every month.
Yeah. And, and, yeah.
When we start this project, can we stop whenever we choose to? And when we do that, do all the expenses stop at the same time? Now, I know if we've made a contract with somebody and says we're gonna buy something from you, that we'll probably have to fulfill that contract, but this, if we decide somewhere down, if it's body and its wisdom and decides down the road somewhere, we've had, we've had school projects that had to come online, and, and when we decide, if we were to decide, if whoever's here were to decide, that we're gonna stop this project, does, can we get set up where all the expenses will stop at that point in time?
That's correct, Mr. Hinton. So that's why it will be handled in phases, and you will have to approve each phase as it goes along. This first phase would be, we've already hired the construction manager, so now the first thing he would be responsible for, and before he would take any of his pay, he is now to go out and get us the architectural, the design, everything that has to go in that, he would be in the forefront of negotiating and dealings with the church, on which site we would go for. At the end of this 5.7, like I said, you could pull the plug right then, and then it could sit over here in a canister, and if a year or two years down the road, this body said, "we need to build a courthouse," well, we've already got a courthouse that we've told them with 16 courtrooms, designed, ADA-approved, ready to go on a site with the engineering already done. If it takes a year or two, or you never do. Now, I think the intention is to move on and move forward, but when you take on a big project like this, one of the things in budget that we were very specific with and worked very close with General Ops was, at least while I was here, I did not want anything where we are committing to an entire project. This is a, this whole body will probably change before this project is completed. So there's gonna be some changes along the way. It's gonna be a long time. So, Mr. Hyde will still be here, but that's, death taxes of Mr. Hyde. But, but we could do phases, and this body would choose which, which phase do we wanna build, do we wanna do the jail edition first? Do we wanna do the courthouse? Do we wanna do the remodel of the square, of the courthouse on the square? So, and then it would have to be vote, and the funds would have to be relinquished. Does that make sense?
Yes, so who, who would make the, I guess this body would make the decision to stop, based on funds, pretty much.
That's correct. Just like on the school project, we release those each time. At any point, we voted. If, if it would've voted, hey, we got eight of them done, and, and number nine came in here, and it was $2 million for station camp, and it did not pass, then that money would not have been released.
Okay. The, now, the architect and engineering work, once we buy into what's on the agenda tonight, we will approve the architect and engineering cost. In other words, we're gonna get the whole project designed on the front end, and then we're gonna go through and dissect to decide what we do first, and where we stop, and catch a breath, and start again.
Yes, sir.
We'll have it all in the package, in the canister.
Yeah, Mr. Pomeroy's canister.
That's right. That's right, okay.
And that's correct, and there will be a special committee appointed to manage this project. So after the construction manager starts this project, every time there's a major change, there will be a special committee that that will first go to. That will be a little bit different than General Ops. So that committee has not been selected due to the fact that there's some people changing seats in 30 days. So in September, there will be a committee that will be put together of all the commissioners that will be focused on working very closely with the construction manager.
The negotiating of property prices, we've got to make some deals to get property with the construction manager or the manager, whoever, be responsible for those negotiations, and then that'll come back to this body to approve that amount.
I think he'll be heavily involved with it, but I think that we have a great working relationship with the church and Executive Holt. Yet again, that would be, we would vote to approve it if there was a deal, but just due to the way government's set up, yet again, that would be something that our executive branch would handle on the day-to-day. I do believe that some of those talks, they know about this, the church has been at every meeting, they're not gonna be caught off guard when we go and say, "here's our two sites, one of them." Now, I don't know which way the church or their members will go, but no, they, we have representatives from the church here tonight, and they, they've been very, so they, they will know how this is gonna go.
Okay, who, who'll take care of the bidding process? That our consultant or?
Yet again, I think that it would be between the executive and then whatever that comes back to, we, the deal would come to that committee, and then you would, now, you would be approving that in this, because in this up to 5.7 million, it is to select a site. So in this money, it's not new money, what we have is 5.7 million, and one of the part, cost of that will be whatever the cost of the land is for us, along with the architecture, the design, and, and the fees.
So when we get ready to bid whatever part of this project we want to put out, the?
You're ready to go.
The consultant will do that, or will county executive do that, or will they do that in conjunction? I don't want us to get too far out of loop, is what I'm trying to.
Yet again, that's down the road, but when that happens, it'd be just like that committee that you chaired. That construction manager will work with our executive to go out and get the bids. We will, we will entrust him. It has, still has to go through our legalities, through our process, we have to be the ones to bid it, but he will guide us on those specs. We already have the design, everything in place, so we should be in a good point. Then that would come to committee again and say, "okay, here's, here's where we're at, here's where we, the architecture, here's the bids that came in." And then that body, that would then have to have approval from all 20, you know, just like here, would pick which one of those bidders they would take.
Do you think when, when this project is dissected and, and when they come back to us, we talked about phases, do you think they'll be able to estimate or give any reasonable amount of money as to what each one of these phases will cost?
I think we've already had that in the presentation, which had, that you've been given. I don't have that memorized. But there was escalators in there based off how many years you might wait till you got to that project, so you wouldn't be going by, blind. So if you, it was about halfway through that presentation book, if you go to each one of the phases, you can look in, and it had a, if you waited 10 years, this is kinda what we think, what we think construction costs.
3% a year, I think, is what he guessed, yeah.
So those numbers are out there, and that's part of what JPA helped us with as well.
That concludes my list of questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton.
Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize in advance if my little talk here is a little disjointed. My printer decided to go out of ink this afternoon, so I've got about half a dozen pieces of paper to refer to. First one I wanna address is, on July 4th, I sent our finance director a text asking for a debt amortization schedule after the last budget meeting to see if we could afford this project. And I'm just gonna paraphrase here, and I said, "I'd like a debt schedule for the appropriate repayment period of any debt barred for this project, along with the new Cotton Town School Complex, in addition to," there goes my phone, "in addition to normal capital expenditures for the repayment period." And I said, "I know you have to make assumptions." Mr. Loing, to his credit, sent me a reply and said we needed a talk on the phone, and we did that. But to paraphrase his response, he said, "I would believe, I believe it would be very beneficial if the county started strategic long-term planning for operational capital needs. I have a projected capital funding, however, without more details on capital needs, it'd be more confusing than helping, than helpful. To make the strategic plans capital-operational relevant and realistic, we'd need a few items from the operational departments, estimated capital needs, schools, EMS, EMA courts for the next 20 years, and estimated additional operational needs for new employees, small equipment replacement, unusual increases in supplies, et cetera." So basically, Mr. Loing was, was very helpful, and it came down to, "we don't have enough information."
Mr. Hinton, could you get a little closer to the mic? I think we're having trouble hearing.
Okay. Sorry. We don't have a, so basically, basically, it came down to, "we don't have enough information to, to do what I asked." So, started doing a little research on my own, Mr. Chairman, and these are not exactly apples, apples, because it's hard to find this, but right now, our budgeted net debt per capita is $782. If we do the school system, which we will have no, no option not to do the school system for about $150 million, and assuming the criminal justice system center would be about $100 million, adding that $250 million to our current population would increase the debt from $782 per capita to $2,143 per capita, which is nearly a 2.7 times increase. Now, there's no increase in population there, I didn't wanna bother with that calculation. So I said, "woo, that's, that's a huge increase, almost three times to pile on debt to our citizens." So started looking around for other comparisons, and this is from the Daily News Journal of 82616, so it's fairly current, and it's dealing with 2015 numbers. So total debt for Rutherford County is $1,376, and this is all per capita numbers. Wilson County is $1,0819, Williamson County is $2,852, and Davidson County holds a dubious distinction of $8,128. Glad I don't live in Davidson County. So in reference, you know, our number right now is $782, and it would balloon to $2,143 with the addition of these two projects. Sea Task, as we, most of us are familiar with, published a brochure or document on 7/6/18, so it's extremely timely, and entitled, "Managing Your County's Debt." And there were about several, five, four or five steps it said that you needed to have, but to make it shorter, I'm just gonna talk about the first three. Number one is to develop a capital project improvement plan and budget, which we've sort of done. Number two is develop a multi-year budget, which we do not have. And number three is determine the current debt position, and their recommendation is that debt per capita should not exceed $1,200. So keeping in mind my prior number, if these two projects were to go forward, it would be $2,143 based on the current population. Personal income should not exceed 15% of the debt per capita. I don't know what that number's going to be, because we haven't projected anything out further than a year. And then the, the debt per capita should not be over 10% of the assessed value. Again, I don't know the timing of this project, nor the timing of the school project, so I can't tell you whether we're in the ballpark or not. Now, further, to my chagrin, when I was looking at this, I ran across an article in the Gallatin News, says, "On June 19, 2018, the Gallatin City Council passed a resolution to adopt the city's first strategic plan." Just thinking my chagrin when they beat us to the punch, they are a fraction of our budget, but they are ahead of us in their desire for planning. And in this document, I won't read the whole thing, but says, "A strategic plan is a management tool that helps an organization align its leadership, resources, and operations in order to achieve a set of goals, which are often aimed at achieving a long-term vision. For many municipal governments, a strategic plan serves to establish priorities for policy initiatives, budgeting, staffing decisions, and capital investments in order to create outcomes that are important to its customers and community at large." The document is, is positioning your priorities for investments in yourself to position the organization of city government to better deliver for residents, business, visitors, and tourists across the city of Gallatin. This is in the Gallatin News on July 6th. Among the issues of importance to city leadership, listed in the proof plan include jobs in economy, transportation and mobility, public safety, affordable living, parks and recreation, citizen engagement, governmental performance and growth and development. So I was very impressed with, with, with the city of Gallatin's proactive thinking there. So, in conclusion, this county commission has a fiduciary responsibility to minimize the debt burden placed upon our taxpayers and ensure that any new debt does not in duly impede the ability to make additional investments in other capital projects or provide the necessary level of services. I'm not saying I wanna make it clear, Mr. Chairman, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this project, I'm saying I'm opposed to the lack of planning for this project going forward for the next conceivable years. So I would like to make an, offer amendment to the motion to defer the, the expenditures on this for a period of, a minimum of four months, and direct the finance director to come up with a strategic capital plan that includes those items I've discussed previously.
Okay. We got a motion to defer?
Defer.
Defer.
Yes, sir.
And seconded by Commissioner Vaughn. Okay, there's no discussion on the motion to defer. It requires 16 votes. Motion's been made and seconded, let's vote. Okay, hang on one sec, go, Mr. Kemp, time to get it typed in, but, and set up, but yes vote means you're voting to defer. If you vote no, then you're voting no on the motion to defer, just so we're clear on what we're voting for.
Do you have no comments on it?
No comments.
Motion to defer is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. All 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving 11 affirmative votes, the mo, fails to carry.
Okay. Commissioner Goode, you were in the, you were in the queue, so you're up, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just in reference to the, the research part and the timing part, and I'm just gonna clarify a couple things. Kudos and appreciate Chairman Pomeroy for answering the questions. The only, the only one I think, just to add to some of the clarification is to Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hinton's questions, was the city in the negotiation part, the city of Gallatin and the mayor obviously would be a part of that, enter on that committee. JPA, I just want to remind everybody that, that came here and did a full presentation for everybody, is the only company in the country that this is all they do. They're, they're the company that was chosen by every county in the state of Tennessee in the last decade that has remodeled and done justice centers and courthouses. That's Montgomery, Davidson, Rutherford, and Hampton, Hamilton. To the point respectfully of it needing more research, no project in this county has ever had more research. And I can say that wholeheartedly. The committee that many of you have, have, had the opportunity to come to, and I'm one of two commissioners on there, and kudos to Madam Schell, couldn't be here tonight, that is chairing that committee, has at least 35 different people on the committee. Not only almost every elected official in this county and judge, city councils from Gallatin, the DA, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I won't take you through the names, you have the names in your packet, in your book. Every elected official has sits on this committee. We have met countless times for literally hundreds of hours, and as you all know, it's been going on for two and a half years. If there's data you don't have on this project, you simply have not paid attention at, or in any way, shape, or form. I think it was Mr. Hinton, Mr. Chairman, that said a couple months ago, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but we do know beyond a shadow of a doubt, doing nothing and kicking this can down the road is absolutely not an option, and all it's gonna do and kicking this can down the road is absolutely not an option and all it's going to do is cost us more money. This is identical to the way the majority of this body voted for the new school project. We voted to go do that $100 million school project, but we, it still has to come back to us. We still have to prove it all the way along, just like we did the $73 million school project that we're right now wrapping up with Witten and Brown. So again, the way you voted in this body to do these type things already, just like that school project, this is exact same process. If there is a catastrophic event, God forbid, in 90 days or three years, if we don't need, if we can't go forward, we just don't go forward. The same with the school that you voted for. If something happens, once we build that mill school and something catastrophic happens and we can't go forward, we just vote not to do it. It's as simple as that. And, and again, I'll, I'll close with this and kudos to the entire committee, but you will vote on every project as it comes back, just like you do the schools. And, and so, Mr. Chairman, I would say this is a much-needed thing and something that will change this county and the direction of this county and the city of Gallatin, but the entire county way beyond all of our lifetime. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. We're going to go to Mr. Pomeroy.
Is Mr. Taylor in first?
You were in first.
So, I didn't know if I'd just happen to stay in. So just, I just want to clarify yet again, Mr. Foster's the vice chairman of the Budget Committee and I appreciate his number and his hard work, but a couple of things that just didn't jive with me. One, you're not approving a $100 million project right now. So, and you haven't approved a $150 million school project right now. We have planned. We also brought a debt capacity. It's impossible to plan out. I guess we could ask every department what they thought their capital needs were going forward over the next 10 years. I have some idea what that would look like. It would be a very extensive, big list that everybody would write down because they wouldn't want to leave something out of, well, what if they hold me to this down the road? But with that being said, we are not voting on the $100 million. And I understand per capita and all, but growth is a big, is a big issue, which he mentioned, he did not want to include that number in there because that would go down with, with as citizens move here. And I believe citizens are moving here daily. We have to build schools as a county. We have to provide a courthouse as a county. We have to take care of our roads. That's what we have to do. As a county, we, we have to. I don't know if you've had a speeding ticket by a state trooper lately or been in General Sessions Court or had the displeasure of probating your will in a basement, but we obviously don't have court space. There's not a single person in this room who would say we do. We clearly don't. So I hear we failed to plan. We failed to plan. What you're doing is voting to get a plan. At some point in time, you got to say, "This is what this would cost to do it." I'm thinking about remodeling my bathroom. I can meet with my wife every morning at breakfast until I have somebody come out and design it and pay the money for somebody to, "Hey, we got to knock this wall out. We got to do this." When you do this, but I still get to choose when I, when I release those funds to do it. You're just kicking a can down the road that has been kicked a lot and for a long, long, long time. I think this is a project that we really need to look at. I'm not saying when we need to spend the money. I don't know, we, none of us, if we had a crystal ball, that would be, that'd be really nice. But I do know this, that if you wait until all of a sudden, we've already been told that we're inadequate and we don't have enough space, we wouldn't be serving out of a basement. I mean, that's just, that, that, these are just facts. But if we wait until it just even gets even worse, if you don't go ahead and get to this point, then you've got to go back and hire another construction manager. You've got to do it and you got to, what is the problem and what is the, what is the, hurt to get all the land secured, get where you need to, and get a blueprint? Hey, I bought my plans. This is my dream. I hope one day I can afford to build this. As our needs arise, you have a plan and you look at it and you go through the proper steps to budget it out, to send a bid, and then to vote to see if you have the money. But this is going to get us there. And by the way, we are not borrowing money for this 5.7 million dollars. We are paying for this out of local capital that we have. So we're buying the plan with cash that we've done a wonderful job that we have available. And after we were to buy this plan, we'll still have almost $12 million in local capital still available cash for the rest of the year. That's after we've just approved 4 million. We've planned, we've saved money, we've, we've, we've put ourselves in a situation where you can do these things and, and we've done that together. That's not, and I know this gets a little antsy. I can speak freely because I've already lost an election, but I understand when you start, "Oh, they approved $100 million. How does that look?" But I would encourage each and every one of you to say, "Is this a need for our county?" And I don't want to look like Metro, to be honest with you, because I went to the Metro's courthouse when they waited 15 years too long before they started that project. And now we've got prisoners in courts 20 miles separated all over because they wait and you got a hole downtown. And it's probably a whole lot more expensive than if they would have taken the time to do what we're doing right now and plan for it and get those costs where we can manage it. It's going to happen. So we have planned, the capital's there, we can afford to do both the school and the courthouse. It's not going to happen overnight and the debt wouldn't be issued overnight. We're not issuing $200 million worth of debt tonight, by no means.
Thank you, Mr. Pomeroy. Mr. Chris Taylor.
I'm on, Mr. Chairman. I'll try and be very short and quick about it. We have been planning, long-term planning, this commission since day one. When we raised taxes, we set a specific amount of money in there for debt. That was because we knew we would have to do certain things over the next 20 years. We didn't do it for four years or five years. We did it for at least 20. The first thing we did was the schools. That was project by project. Each project was voted on individually here in this commission and we approved it. The same thing with this. The difference is with the schools, we didn't have anybody, we had the school systems in themselves as far as bidding everything out and they didn't need 5 million to get it started. They kind of went with it for each project. As far as debt, debt and debt ratios for citizens, there's nothing. We're not adding any debt to a citizen by voting on this tonight. It's money that's already set aside to be spent. There's no debt coming from this. If you want to say there's $150 million of debt, at some point there might be if we don't do a good job of managing it. But again, when we put the money in the tax increase, it was so we could systematically fix things in this county that because of the recession and other things, previous commissions couldn't. Simple. We've got the money there right now to pay for this. This will give us a blueprint. They told us right off the bat, our jail isn't right. We don't have enough for the women and the children right now. It's about $2 million. When we get done with this 5.7 million, we'll have plans for that $2 million jail. It might be 3 million at that point, I don't know, but it'll be done. And if we choose to do that, then we'll do just like we did with the schools and we'll move forward and we'll vote on each one individually. And then we will acquire some debt, but it'll be debt that's been managed and set up. Mr. Lawing, to say he hasn't done a strategic plan is a disservice to him and his, his department. They've done an amazing job of planning out the next 20 years to a different degree. We are working on a long-term strategic plan like Mr. Commissioner Foster asked for, but that requires a little bit more than what we have right now. That's why we spent, if you heard budget last week or last month, about $35,000 or $30,000 for a benchmarking, benchmarking program. And what that's do is that's going to teach our finance people how to come into the various departments and set standards that we can measure with other people, all part of a long-term strategic plan. Those are all points that don't really matter for tonight, I'll be quite frank. The only thing we're voting on is $5.7 million of money already set aside to set up plans for us. We need it for the jail. We need it for the courthouse, just like we do with the schools. There's nothing to it. When they say, "Yes, we want to do it," you know, we don't. That's, that's when it'll come down to it. Not this year, not next year, probably about two years from now, when they actually have a completed project for us, when they say, "Here's what it's going to cost to do A, B, and C." And then we start voting on it. But that's not tonight. We can't get there until we do tonight and I think it's horribly irresponsible to say in any shape, form, or fashion, this is a burden on the people of this county right now. It's 5.7 million that was set aside over a year ago, planned for. Just like the 12 million that's sitting in the money right now that Kevin mentioned, there's a radio system we're getting ready to bid out. Hopefully it won't be more than that. If it is, we'll have to wait a little bit to do it, but we've planned for that. There's a plan for all of these things and every one of you in this room has been involved in that process. We've all discussed it when we passed budgets this year and previous years. All I'm going to say is it's a, it's a, to me, it's a very simple vote. We have the money. It makes sense to plan ahead and the only way we can do that is by voting on it tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Posposil. Call for the question. Okay, Mr. Posposil calls for the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Echols. Let's vote.
Call for the question is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Question received 16 affirmative votes. We are now back on the main, on the, we're on the motion, Resolution 1807.
Resolution.
Resolution 180704. You reading the call for the vote, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The resolution is now on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 13 votes are entered. Receiving 16 affirmative votes, the resolution is approved on first and final reading.
Yes, sir.
And I was not here.
Hang on one second, Mr. Pomeroy. Yeah, okay, go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, I was not here last month to, to thank all the commissioners and especially all of the Budget Committee who ended up taking three and a half days off of work to come and do the workshops and put this year's budget together. I've been honored to serve that committee and to serve it as its chair. I'm thankful for Mr. Foster, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Goode, Mr. Vaughn, everybody that has worked on that at least since I've been on it. If I'm missing anybody, I don't think I am, Mr. Gomenden and so, Mr. Taylor, Dr. Taylor. So thank you for allowing us to do that, but it was a lot of hard work that went into that and I don't know if that was mentioned, but we had three and a half days off of work and I think we got a budget that was good for the citizens and I just want to thank everybody for your hard work.
And Mr. Pomeroy, I'd like to say thank you for the hard work you've given the last couple of years. We really do appreciate it. And for our last motion, Commissioner, Dr. Taylor.
Mr. Chairman.